Hey, good evening, everybody. This is a Greenbelt City Council work session. My name is Anna Jordan. I'm the mayor, council.
Kristen Weaver, Mayor Portem.
Jenny Pompey, council member.
Rodney Roberts, city council.
Okay, council, are there any information items tonight? Yes, please. Well, you know, this is a work session, a budget work session. We hold work sessions on Mondays and Wednesdays several times a month to exchange information with community stakeholder groups and gather information from staff, advisory boards, residents. We don't take votes or formal actions during our work sessions. Work sessions and meetings are always open to the public, except for executive sessions as authorized by state laws so that residents and others can disclose, can actually observe councils deliberations. We strive to provide a reasonable opportunity for the public to voice opinions on matters being considered, so we'll pause periodically for public comment, questions. During these times, if you wish to ask that question, if you're in the room, raise your hand, and after being recognized, you can go over to the microphone. You'll need to state your name and where you live in Greenbelt. That's for the minutes. If you're watching on Zoom, you can submit a written question using the Q and A tab on the bottom of your screen, or you can actually raise your virtual hand. And once again, after being recognized, you need to state your name and where you live. Also, we don't accept anonymous comments online. And finally, if you're watching on cable TV, or on Facebook, or live streaming, you can send us an email. That's probably the best thing to do. The email address is questions@greenbeltmd.gov. So with the public comment and questions, please let me draw remarks to three minutes, speak on one topic related to the question under consideration, and we ask that you avoid questioning the motives of others. In general, we're all neighbors, so let's be civil. So this is a budget work session, and I think we're about halfway through the process. We've been working so hard, probably not as hard as staff has been working on this because our city staff is incredibly talented and diligent, and they've actually been working on this budget presentation since November. This is the proposed budget for the next fiscal year, and council goes through each section. We hold two public hearings, and at the next city council meeting, we'll be having the first public hearing. And the reason why we do this is to, you know, to ask questions and to actually, you know, council through the public is capable and does make suggestions and modifications. These really difficult times right now, it's pretty daunting, but the budget, the finances are very, very tight, so we don't have a lot of discretion, but we're looking at every single section to see what we can do to streamline the budget while maintaining the services that are so important for our residents. So tonight, we're talking about the planning and community development budget and planning and community development in Greenbelt. We're a planned community. We wouldn't be here hadn't have been a plan and planners. So it's a really important function. We're fortunate to have very stable members of the department and department head. So I'd like to kick it over to City Manager Summerone to kind of queue things up. City Manager, how are you tonight?
I'm well. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. Good evening, residents. Mr. Mayor, appreciate your kind remarks and the acknowledgement of how challenging this budget has been. When we started our budget process back in November, the world was a lot different, and even then, it presented challenges. We were facing a $3 million deficit that quickly grew to over $4 million in the budget before you addressed, closed that deficit entirely. And over the last couple of months, as economic conditions have changed or there are signs of it changing, we've looked at contingencies in our budget to adjust should things change, such as the property abatement programs. I've shared with council that we've had over 60 appeals of properties valued at over $2 million that have been submitted, and we estimated what would be the property tax revenue impact of that. That's a way, part of our contingency planning has been to estimate that financial impact and how we will cover that loss in revenue. So thank you for your kind remarks, and also thank you for hanging in there with us because things have been changing underneath us without our control. Things at the state have changed, and the council, sorry, the county has not passed their budget, so we're unsure about what that impact will be. So there's more, more things that we need to account for in the near future, and we welcome that being a collaborative approach with council because there are a lot of reductions in this year's budget, continuing from last year's budget. Overall, just to recap this, this, the FY 2026 budget has 13 positions on paper that were, that have been reduced, and one of those positions is in this, in this budget. Last year, we had hoped that we could hire the co-supervisor for part-time, and late last year, we saw the economic picture not getting better. So I want to thank Terry Ruby and Gilberto Cabrera for being so supportive and understanding of the challenges we faced last year, and they willingly, and I would say enthusiastically as well, picked up the additional duties of that co-supervisor and figured out a way to handle that work last year and continue to carry that load into next year. While I'm here, I also want to thank Ms. Bertha Gaiman for her dedication to this, to this budget. It's been a lot of late nights trying to figure out how to close the gap and provide exceptional service to residents, and this is what I think is the team's effort, the best approach to serving our residents with excellence.
Thank you very much for that. We appreciate all of the hard work, but there's just so much uncertainty, so many things. The information that we've been getting for the tax abatement appeals, this is the first, I think this may be the first time we've actually gotten these reports, or are we getting them in a more timely manner?
Yes, we are getting. We actually got last year's very late, after the budget was approved. So I started asking for it a little earlier this year, so we actually received it. And in terms of dealing with it, I just want to remind council that we do have $2.1 million sort of stored away in the fund balance, and so, and also remind you that those appeals are, is a process of about 18 months, so I doubt that we'll ever see all of them at one time, but, you know, as they come in and if they are more than what we've actually budgeted for, then we have that pot of money to use. So I think we're in good shape based on that.
Yeah, it's fortunate that we have a very thoughtful reserve process in place that protects the city against unusual fluctuations in our revenues. It's a good thing that we put that in place maybe four years ago.
Yeah, you did, you did, and it's been working wonders, so kudos to council really for getting those financial policies in place.
Okay, well, let's, let's get the show on the road and kick things over to Terry Ruby, who are longtime Director of Planning and Community Development. Terry, how are you today? Those allergies, are they kicking in?
Well, I don't particularly have allergies, but let's hope that's what they are.
You need a mask.
But thank you. I'm joined by Gilberto Cabrera. He's our Assistant Director of Community Development. Jamie Fear will be joining us as well, Assistant Director of Planning. She is actually at the Advisory Planning Board where the final draft of the weight-finding fine plan is being presented, so that'll be presented to council very shortly. The Arts Advisory Board, they're having actually a dual meeting together, so she'll be attending right after that, so I expect her fairly shortly. I'm very fortunate, I consider my fortune, I have a very strong team. Couldn't do it without everybody, our admin, staff, our two women in the office, Talia Mildred worked tirelessly running all of our programs. They do a fantastic job. I think people would be amazed at how much, how many of our programs, they actually are instrumental in running, some of which they run independently, which isn't typical of admin, but that's the structure we have in order to utilize and maximize these resources and the talent we have. Mildred has been essential because she's fluent in Spanish, so she has really allowed us to connect to that, that community, which is a large portion of our, of our population. So we feel very fortunate for that. And then our three inspectors, I like to always mention them by name because I think they do so much work in Austin or behind the scenes and don't get credit, although I think they probably prefer that at times, but Michael Day, Charles Redding, and Anthony Crowe. They've been with us now, Michael's our newest one, but they've been here now for quite a while. They were all fully certified in I C property maintenance, and then they have a fire certification
certification.
Yeah, and then Michael Day just finished that, and that is an extensive amount of, that's a very hard, rigorous course, my understanding, not everybody passes it. So he just completed that about three months ago, two months ago, and he also became a new father, so. But, so we had a, I think for FY 25, as usual, we had a successful year. When I say successful, I mean if you look at our performance measures, almost 1,000 single-family rental inspections, over 3,000 property maintenance, apartment units were inspected. As you well know, we, we inspect all commercial properties within the city, and I'm happy to report, because I just told the treasurer this yesterday, our commercial licensing fees are $76,000 currently over what we anticipated, and I credit that to Mr. Cabrera and his ability to really build our database, but also refining some of our polished procedures, our efficiency, our quality control. So we are capturing a higher percentage, I mean, our goal is 100%, but we did recognize when we took over these programs and efficiencies, so we're very proud of that. What, I don't like to say we're proud when we have our municipal infractions, but you'll, that was a question originally, we anticipated 7,000, we're at 20,000, and when I say we're not pleased with that, it means that we had problems, we had challenges with some of our properties. Our goal is not to assess fines, our goal is to get compliance through other means, but at a last resort, when we have to do that, we do that. So, and I think we're well aware of some of the problems we had with heat and other, you know, and trash and so forth. So, and then planning, exciting projects on the horizon. On next week, we will be publishing the RFP, releasing the request for proposals for the Hanover Parkway project, the grant-funded project to complete 90% engineering for an off-road bicycle facility. We submitted our draft grant agreement for the Vision Zero and received, I believe, like two minor comments, so we expect that to be approved and then submitted back to us for execution. And then you might have seen, as recently this week, working in partnership, we couldn't do this without Public Works, our planning projects, they installed the rectangular rapid slash beacon, which is what we had at St. Hughes. I know at least two have been installed on Cherrywood Lane, and I believe they also were able to get the ones on Hanover Parkway, and they have been diligently working with our contractor to build new bus shelters. We have one in and will be moving on to additional ones, and concrete work is starting as well on our bus shelters. We were fortunate enough to have Brian Abbott's talents with in-house, but understanding the resources, staff resources it would take to implement the $150,000 worth ARPA projects, he trained our contractor, and he's very pleased with the quality of work. So, and we've actually talked about maybe in future, just as a cost-saving means of staff resources, perhaps that's a better way in which to fund our two shelters a year. So we'll be discussing that internally. So that, you know, in a nutshell, are some of the highlights, not even close, I think you have the work program from planning that highlights all the projects we're working on, there's plethora of them. So with that, if you want to dive into the budget, or if you have any questions regarding what I just covered?
Yeah, let's dive right in. I know you submitted a memo, which you just sort of summarized. Yeah, let's dive right in. So, you know, thank you, you submitted a memo, which is sort of an overview, and you submitted a work plan for the next year. So, I don't know, I think we can kind of work through questions. We've submitted questions in advance, and some of them we'll kind of discuss. But as far as the budget book, looking at the first page, you know, I like those, those code enforcement uniforms, I really do. Where did you get the fatigues? You think I can get some in my size?
They're from Amazon.
Maybe I'll hold off on this. But, so first, you know, just based on what Ms. Ruby has just presented, council, do you have any questions or thoughts you want to share?
I'll just say that it always impresses me, the enormous amount of work that your department is able to get done with the number of staff that you have, and I know you said you work, you work in partnership with Public Works a lot, but it's still just so impressive, the amount of work that you guys are able to get through, so. So kudos to you for that. Just a brief question, you mentioned the collecting, you know, collecting fees and issuing fines. So do you anticipate, you know, because of new legislation that was passed through the House this year, we'll be able to levy higher fines now, like the cap on our fines will be higher? Yeah, it'll, our max will be 5,000, if we choose to implement that. Do you feel like that would, that will be more of a deterrent for people, like just having, because I know the idea of the fines is you want them to be a deterrent, right? You want people to see the fine is coming if you don't do X, Y, Z, so do you feel like a larger fine will serve as a better deterrent?
I think it will help, you know, with certain, I mean, it's certain, for certain properties that have the means, I think sometimes if these don't get paid, there are some challenges amongst some of our, especially our single family on paying the fees, you know, so we do go to court, and when we go to court, we typically ask for the fees to be, fines to be doubled. We are, or we do plan to look at our fee structure. I have some thoughts, and we've talked about this briefly, about increasing some of our fines with the, you know, understanding what the new cap is, but also looking at perhaps some of our repeat offenses and whether, you know, like trash, and perhaps they should be assessed at a higher fee, you know. Looking at a lot of jurisdictions, some do it by type, the nature of, you know, fire safety gets them much higher, and then there were some that get much lower, like pests and so forth. So we're going to look at our fee structure, I expect that we will take, bring an ordinance back to council with fees. I don't believe our fines have been increased for quite some time, so we will certainly be doing that. And I, and there will be across the board, and my recommendation will be across the board to at least increase all of them to some level. Thanks.
Hey, thanks for bringing that up. That's one of the questions that I posed, just a couple of things, just in terms of where, where these infractions are taking place and getting a sense of which ones are sort of serial offenses as opposed to one time and the closure process. I mean, we learned a lot this year in dealing with the situation, and I'll go ahead and say it over Charleston North, and also some of other issues, there seem to be ongoing issues. So I'm wondering if some point between now and the end of the budget process, if there's some way to sort of plot out these infractions geographically so council can get a better sense of?
I don't think mapping for these, for this type of data would really, it would be beneficial. What I think would be was just provide you data by subdivision, by complex, because we're dealing with such small areas within the complexes. So we can certainly provide you with quantitative data in terms of the number of complaints by subdivision, our community development software allows us to do that, and then we can, I think what we did with Franklin Park that you found valuable is sort of just some graphics on what were those violations, right? So we can, we can provide that information.
That'd be great, and, you know, Franklin Park is so big, you know, it, once again, it might be helpful to kind of break that down, although I know maybe in the software, do we just have it as one big community, or is it kind of broken down?
Well, we don't, we don't, right now, we don't have a mapping built into our utopia. So I, my challenge there is utilizing staff resources to map out data where I think you'll get the picture just based on the overall development. What we'll do is we'll put in total number of units, because it's relative, right? I mean, the number of Franklin Park might look really high, but it's relative to the number of units, right? So we'll provide number of units per, per complex and the number of, of violations, but if we know that there's a certain area that, you know, I think it's fair to say they're spread throughout there. They're spread around. If I thought there was something really telling that you'd get from mapping them, but they are geographically spread out through the development.
Okay, okay. Mayor Portem?
Yeah, and so this is sort of related, because one of the things that, we've had some issues, some big issues, right, with apartment complexes that had heating and cooling issues. So one of the questions I had posed that you answered ahead of time was the idea of how can we be more proactive about making sure we're on top of things? And I think your response was that you check those boilers and things for conformity. Do we keep track of sort of which ones are the oldest and maybe most likely to fail? And is there, is there an adjusted schedule for inspections if, if, for a newer boiler, you might not, I mean, I know you have the mandatory ones, but is it, is it, I'm just trying to think of how we can make sure.
We don't conduct the inspection.
You don't conduct the inspection?
No, that is a state licensing certification requirement. So we don't have the in-house capability to do the inspections that are required by state law, so they use third-party inspectors, so what we do is verify that they have, they are in compliance with the state requirements.
Okay. Does it, does the, the information that we get back from that, does it just, is it sort of a, a pass fail, or is it, does it give us more information, just in terms of like, if, does it say, for example, the age of the boiler, or if there are any, or do those inspections look for, well, this isn't a problem now, but this is, you know, I don't know enough about boilers to know what it might be, but like, this is, this is okay for now, but might be failing in a few years to the, to the, do you get that kind of information?
On some reports, we do. We get the age, the year, when it was last tested, and any current or issues that it might have. So we do get those reports from D L L R.
Okay.
So the season for heat starts September 15th, so what we're planning on doing now is three months before that season starts, or when the boilers come online, we're going to be going to all the ones that have boiler systems to ask for that certification and the report.
Okay. Yeah, that's great, and I think, I mean, that, we had the heat issues over the winter. I would imagine for a lot of these, at least the age of a lot of our apartment complexes, most of them that have air conditioning are probably more window units and not centralized air. Do we, what are the checks that we do for, for air conditioning for the summertime?
Right now, we don't have, we just take by complaints.
Okay, so there's not any central check of that?
Right, and that was going to be one of the code updates that was, we were going to bring up. The county did pass a, a ordinance regarding, you know, equipment provided by the landlords, that now they have to supply heat, cooling systems, or AC to tenants.
Okay.
So that's going to be something that I'll be looking into to make sure, see if we can adopt that ordinance, which starts June 1st through September 30th.
Okay.
Landlords must provide equipment to the, to the, equipment provided by the landlord.
Okay, and I guess I didn't realize that, I thought there was already a requirement that temperatures had to be below a certain amount, but I guess maybe it's just above the heat requirements.
The only requirement is if you provide the air conditioning, it has to be ARPA.
Okay, but you don't have to provide it. Okay, that's, that's useful, thank you.
A lot of your questions did evolve around our processes, so if you would indulge us for a few minutes, Gilberto sort of walk you through how we, how we handle a complaint from finish to fines in court and so forth.
Yeah, I'd love to hear that. Mr. Roberts, do you want to hold, or do you want to ask a question?
I just had a quick question. I was wondering, how many of the white brick apartments around here, or any of the other apartments in town, how many have the original boilers?
Right now, the ones that have original boilers were Parkway Gardens. Everyone else had updated boilers.
Is that right? Even the ones on Parkway have updated?
Again, there were two, the ones that failed on Parkway Gardens. One was original, the other one, I don't think it was original, but yes, it failed.
So that, that would have gone back to 1960 something?
No, 1938.
1930, original boiler?
It had an original boiler.
Wow! Was it run on Kohl's?
It's in a museum now.
Well, what I'm kind of trying to say is that you can't judge a boiler or anything like that on, you know, you can't say, okay, this is going to fail in five years or 10 years or something, because some of them old ones, they will last and last and last, you know. And the, what the thing is, is how well is it maintained? You know, if it's well-maintained, it will last. If it's not, you know, it's like anything else. But it's interesting that there's still some out there.
Hey, Mr. Cabrera, so you're going to talk a little bit, just give us a quick overview of the
Complaint process?
Complaint process, and, you know, how we go about with infractions, enforcing infractions.
So initially, when we get a complaint, staff gets a complaint, the lady's up in the main office, they receive the complaint, they document that complaint in the, our code enforcement software. They assign that complaint to an inspector, and inspector then will, within that same day or the, or the following day in the morning, will try to contact and make contact with the complainant to schedule the initial inspection. Once that initial inspection is scheduled, then the officer will go out there to verify the inspection, the violation. If the violation is confirmed, the property owner agent, they will get a notice of correction order. That correction order is for 10 days. Depending on the severity of the issue, the minimum is 10 days. If it's a water leak, anything like that, it's 24 hours to get repaired. After that, again, once the initial notice goes out, then the inspection documents his findings in the software, and then does the reinspection in 10 days, or whenever the reinspection is. After the reinspection, depending on what he finds, you know, it could be a compliance, and then the case will be closed, documented. If it's not in compliance, then the first municipal infraction will be issued. That infraction must be paid within 21 days. If it's not paid within 21 days, it gets forwarded to Prince George's County Courts. At that point, again, you know, the, the process continues every 10th day for compliance, and the process continues. Once they don't pay, we send it to court, even if they decide to pay and the violation's not correct, it will still send that citation to court to get, again, a court-ordered abatement for the city to, to try to see if we able to remedy the situation. After those, those 10 days, again, we're seeking compliance. Every 10th day, they either get a second violation, fine, which is, again, $200 right now, I'm sorry, 250, and then again, every 10th day, the third day, the third time will be $500 and so forth, to gain compliance. Sometimes we get, we are successful at the first, first fine, and again, that's the process how, you know, when it, to gain compliance. And that's basically it.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's a very thoughtful process, and it is, after all, about compliance. We want infractions corrected, so there's a balance between putting, giving fines and also taking into consideration, you know, is it really possible to correct this? Because sometimes a landlord may not, the repair, like replacing a boiler is not something you can do in a week.
And it's the scope of the violation to the discretion of the officer when they go out there. For the reinspection, let's say if it's a damaged drywall, those were really, you know, 10-day policy. Now, if it's something like a mechanical system, AC, something, you know, the blowers, you know, went bad, the boiler systems aren't working, those require, again, some third-party expert to come out, you know, inspect it, do the repairs. Again, if we see movement that they're actually trying to fix the issue, we can work with the discretion to gain compliance or extend that timeframe before we issue a citation.
Typically, we'll ask for a contract, like a contrast, if they have a signed contract, or they provide us the name of the contractor who verifies that they, you know, or backlog. I mean, it is challenging sometimes to get contractors out in a timely manner, you know, especially during COVID and so forth, but that seems to even be the trend now, is people, they're busy. So we do work with them, but we hold them accountable in terms of making sure that they can provide proof that they are moving forward and not just saying, yes, we're doing it. So, and then we've had success with that. I mean, you know, I mean, all in all, landlords don't want people calling us and wanting us to come out, right? So what we always say is, go to, you know, go to your landlord, go to your property manager first, if you're not getting results. If you're not getting results, come to us and then we'll see it through until the end. And we've built, they've built up a very good relationship with all the property managers in the city. So overall, we've had some challenges. There've been some very big challenges in the last couple of years, but we've worked through them.
Yeah, you know, I want to acknowledge your efforts, the efforts of your department in general, because we've had some large, some big situations. So I'm just wondering, so is there like a formal process to expedite when there's a serious complaint and it deals with residents in an area that's unfit for human habitation? Or if it's heat, you know, and it's, there's a cold snap, it's zero degrees? How do you go about assessing escalating and just expediting the process?
So unfortunately, there's no, something to expedite in that manner. Again, our code provides 24 hours for something like unfit, up to 10 days, the minimum that we allow per code. So in order to expedite the compliance period, the citations do come into place. The owners, you know, property owners, they don't want that citation, especially if the new amount is adopted. For those type of issues like, you know, heat, it will definitely push, you know, again, but it's gonna depend on the issue as well, if it's a boiler system that goes out. No matter if we issue a $5,000 citation, the system's out, it needs to be replaced.
And we will ensure, though, that like, for example, that they have, they provide alternative heat sources.
Right, yes.
So, and you know, and that's something that then we verify that they've provided that alternative, that alternative heat source.
Well, I think council will be looking forward to your recommendations on modifying the threshold for the fines, because I think there are some cases where a higher fine may actually bring quicker, a quicker response. So I'm sure you'll make recommendations to the city manager and you'll circle back to council with that. You were just mentioning changing county regulations. I was just wondering, there was a county regulation about security, security cameras. It was about two years ago. What ever happened to that? Who in the city would be talking with our property owners, multifamily unit owners about security cameras and whatnot?
I don't know the current status of that. I mean, it would be Prince George's County who would have overseen the implementation of that program. We can certainly look into where that program's at unless you, but happy to look into it and report back to you on where that stands.
I've had some conversations with a couple of property owners, specifically with Franklin Park Apartments. They were able to negotiate an arrangement with the county to modify the requirements. The requirements that's set for the county would've cost millions of dollars by Franklin Park to install cameras at every egress of the building. So through their legislative support team, they worked out an arrangement. So I understand from both the county and Franklin Park that it was accepted and they're moving forward with the installation of their cameras. On our building, as you know, the city was also required to install cameras. Fortunately, we had already planned on installing cameras at Greenridge House prior to the legislation going into effect, so at least the city's properties, our apartment buildings compliant. I have not heard complaints from other property owners regarding this.
Yeah, it's interesting. Sometimes county council will come up with a bill and put a new regulation ordinance in place and it's just not something that can be accomplished expeditiously. So sometimes it'll take, and it's true with municipal ordinances and resolutions, legislation. We have things we want to happen and sometimes it's just not possible to put them in place immediately. Sometimes it takes a couple of years. So I think what we'll do is just quickly kind of scan through the booklet, come back for about 20 minutes or so, come back specifically to the memos and some of the reports, and that should put us at about 9:00, 8:30, 9:00. Sound good? So just kind of looking at page one, looking at the staffing, I asked the question, it's amazing, we've had the same number of full-time equivalents for 20 years. So the city has grown, we've got more and more situations, more planning to do all the plans around the grant funding that we've gotten, the often-on FBI proposal. So I compliment you, but how have you managed to do that, Ms. Ruby?
Get gray. No. No, you know, it's a challenge. Our work program, considering my time is split, so really two full-time planners and they, we, it's prioritization and reprioritization and reprioritization and just, you know, getting done what we can and understanding the goals of council and what projects best fit into those goals and prioritizing those goals and those outcomes. So that's how we, you know, we sort of approach our work program in that manner and we reevaluate. Oftentimes, things that weren't in our work program, such as several of our newer grant programs, weren't things that we had on the horizon. So we adjusted and some things, unfortunately, will take a backseat for a little longer while we, you know, implement those projects. We manage, we've been very fortunate to just really recruit very talented, hard-working, dedicated staff, so that obviously is instrumental in our ability to succeed in the diverse work program that we have.
It's pretty amazing. And as the city continues to thrive and hopefully thrive and grow, you know, that the number of folks working with you, that assistant director, filling the inspector role in community development, that's something that probably needs to happen.
Yeah, we, when budget allows, we would definitely sort of wanna revisit that position. We have been able to absorb that role both through Gil and myself, but also then utilizing Charles B. Johnson in helping with inspections, but also being instrumental in training Gil in the construction aspect of the sediment erosion control and so forth. So that's been invaluable. I think we've been, you know, doing a very good job in utilizing our, the allocation of funding, if you will, for professional services.
Yeah.
As sort of a leverage for also professional training. And I think that's really been successful and we plan to continue to do that.
Yeah, I was about to kind of ask about that. It seems like we're able to, some of the skill sets that maybe we're not so strong on with engineering and whatnot, we've been able to outsource. And that's a strategy that some cities utilize a lot. You know, they keep the number of full-time employees stable, but they outsource for specific skills or talents that they may not need every day, but from time to time. And I see the training budget and the certifications has increased, but that's a result of having really competent people and training and making sure that our, that your employees, our employees have all the tools that they need to succeed.
You know, we're fortunate to have three AICP certified planners on staff. I don't think you'll see that in a lot of jurisdictions. It's a valuable certification. You probably saw it was a requirement in the state legislation that municipal, you wanted to take on for the land use responsibility, had certified planners on staff. And so all three of us are certified. And what that means is we have to take 32 credits of continuing education every two years, which is fairly significant, because one training is usually .75 or one credit. So it's a lot, it's a lot of, it's a lot of classes. And we, and it's, there are, we have to take certain credits in equity, law, ethics are the three, and then there's just a broad topic, sustainability is another.
Well, I mean, that's important and, you know, as we continue to try and advocate to get additional zoning and land use or planning authority, the fact that we do actually have the capacity to carry that out beyond what the county does is strong. So I know there's a working group that's gonna be focused on that.
That's what I believe that tabled the legislation and got signed to a working group.
Yeah, that's good. And there's at least one municipal liaison on that group, maybe one or two, one from PG CMA. So that's page 137, 138, 139. Any other comments on those pages? We're talking about planning. Page 140, I was asking about the Zero Vision Grant, the federal grants that we get, but you told us that it looks like that funding's gonna come through.
We anticipate coming through. I really think the only question we have, still have, but it's so far, every indication we received is we'll be okay, is our health equity part of our Vision Zero? But we have not received any indication that we won't be receiving that funding. Certainly we'll share any news that we receive with council soon as we receive it.
Right, right. Thank God for that.
Yeah, related to that, so you mentioned that you got a few small comments back and then returned it to them, but none of them were related to the health equity aspects of it?
No, they, I, no.
Okay. So that seems like that's a pretty good story.
We had actually inquired whether we should take that out, rename it, you know.
Right, right.
And they said, no, leave it in as it was awarded, so.
Okay. And I think, I think there's also, there's a, the new call is out or soon to be out, I think, because that came up in the.
It is out.
Transportation Infrastructure Services, and I don't know, have you looked at that? Are there significant differences in what the call looks like for the new Safe Streets for All?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Is it likely, I mean, I guess we haven't even gotten the money for this one, but is there any possibility of starting the process to apply for another one? Are we gonna get through this one first?
No, we're gonna get through this one. Federal grants are challenging and require a lot of resources.
First to get them and then the management.
So I think we're our capability, having two federal grants at once is all we actually can absorb right at this point.
Okay.
But hopefully, as a spinoff of this, the next step, this would be a great project to move forward through that grant program, you know, next year, once we complete this one.
Sounds good.
And on page 140 also, just talking about the Hanover, the off-road, Hanover Parkway. I know Mr. Gasper had passionately, you know, asked to see more visible improvements for pedestrians and cyclists on Hanover Parkway. So it's good to hear that the off-road path there between Shrum Hills Park and Greenbrook Drive is moving ahead. I think that's gonna be a real help for the residents over in Greenbrook Village and Hunting Ridge as well, because people will be able to cross the road and walk up the steps onto that path and they'll be able to safely walk to Shrum Hills Park without walking on the street where there's no sidewalk there.
They can also go up the access road to the stormwater as well. It's just very, probably more usual, finally.
Yeah, it's a big help.
The bicycles as well, so.
Okay. Looking at the next few pages, page 143 is more focused on community development. And I was asking about, we've got a, I guess we got three electric vehicles now?
Four.
Four. They're parked over there by the community center. It looks like they're multiplying and they're next, close to, and every time I look, there's another one there, which is a good thing.
Yeah, sometimes they're parked at public works getting charged, so they fluctuate in the number out there, yeah.
Yeah, and we're looking for, I guess we'll have the recharging stations over by the library next year sometime?
We're shooting for this year, actually. The team, their timeline is June of this year, and we did the site visit last week and found the which transformer to connect us with. Instead of buying a new transformer and starting on site, we'll be tying into the library transformer.
Okay.
Fortunately, the transformer's owned by Pepco, so we can tie into that transformer.
That's great.
Yeah, so it reduces the delivery time of acquiring a new transformer and network, so fingers crossed, June. And we wanna deliver it this fiscal year so that we could then move on to the next project, which is Body Addict Park.
Right. So those vehicles, it seems, how many miles do you think code enforcement does, you know, back and forth throughout the city? This is probably a lot of miles.
We do, yes, especially the inspectors, Anthony, Michael, and Charles. Again, you know, they're out there windshield, doing windshields, doing inspections, so they definitely put a lot of miles in.
Right. So how do you manage that between the required inspections versus complaints and following up on special situations? How do you manage the calls that come in and the staff, just in terms of staff time?
We, as they come, the commercial residential inspections, they have the capability of calling them up, scheduling in advance. Other complaints are the ones that when they come in, again, they try to do it as the tenant allows us to go in. So they, those take priority over the commercial and residential inspections. But again, they utilize the software and, again, the calendar to schedule and not be in conflict with each one.
So, and with the residential ones, do you work with the management companies? Do they know that we're coming in to do our inspections in this particular?
Yes, they get prior notice from the inspector that we'll be out there. Again, once we get the file from admin, we call them up, we schedule the inspection, and then again, assign it as, you know, time allowed.
Okay. Are there some other questions about community development budget in particular? Okay, well, we've got a couple of questions from folks that are here in the room with us. Jay Davis, oh, you've got your budget book. Man, brace yourself. Good evening, Jay.
Jay Davis, Greenbelt East. I really don't have a question, but because I asked a question, I now have a suggestion on page 143, down at the bottom where you have municipal infractions. I thought that was the number of municipal infractions, and it's dollar sign. So you need to put dollar signs there so you know that's the amount of money that we brought in for municipal infractions. Otherwise, I would not have asked the question. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. In the document, we'll address the consistency of using the currency symbol.
There, I think, are a couple, I think it's usually the first one at the top, I think, at the top of the column. I don't know, yeah, there are a few places that I think I did note some inconsistencies that I haven't reported yet. Yeah.
Right.
Dollar sign.
Okay, Mr. Orleans?
It had been asked at a previous budget work session, this budget, as it has been in the past, that for each budget work session, it would be helpful to include for distribution on the table, changes or changes, certainly changes in whole numbers, but suggested changes in the previously distributed budget information so that we can follow along more coherently the direction the budget's going. That question is asked again. With regard to the lack of a need for obviously, obvious reasons, not to fill that single position of, what is it, I think it's called supervisory inspector? It's suggested in the memo from the director, Ms. Ruby, that the responsibilities of that vacant position will be shared between the director, assistant director of community development, and on-call engineer consultants. So my question tonight is, how often in the current fiscal year, we won't go back beyond this current fiscal year, have on-call consultants been involved in resolving any inspection questions, both in hours and in money? And extrapolating into the next year's budget, based on whatever was spent in this year's budget, how can we, how much can we expect to be spent in next year's budget? Thank you very much.
On-call, just on-call engineering services on a, as these bases are funded in the professional services out of community development. So, and we typically, in past years, have, I believe there was one year where we had Motiva very actively, reached that funded amount. It really is dependent on what development, because at least we don't, can't project always what development's gonna start in a fiscal year, so it's our best guess. Currently, we are using them for assisting with the inspections at 7010 Greenbelt Road. That is the extent, I think, of how we've used them this fiscal year to date. We did utilize them. We did utilize them during the construction of the, but the foundation of the parking garage at Beltway Plaza. But again, I think it's, we, as you'll see, we anticipate being under this year in utilization of on-call. When we say on-call, we're contract, we, council through contract, we are writing clause with two, two engineering firms, but the one we use mostly is Charles P. Johnson Associates located right here in Greenbelt.
Right, right. Okay, thank you, thank you, that's helpful. So there were a number of discussion questions that were kind of brought up by council members. I know Councilmember McKinney, you had a few really good questions there, do you want to let them rip?
Based on, in advance, I have some, or something, I'll back.
You're welcome.
Look, what is, I think we've been talking a little bit about, just going back to. Sorry about that, about the, just the code enforcement related in Franklin Park in general. And I just wanted to understand what the follow-up process is. So after you go through and you've done the inspection, or, well, one, you get a complaint, you do the inspection, and then what does the, how do you follow up with either the individual or then the property? How does, and how long does that take? And then what is sort of our follow-up after that, if it's not addressed?
So, at the notice, when we issue the initial notice of violation or correction order, there's a re-inspection date assigned to that correction order. So the property manager, they are aware when we're going to be out there again. We communicate with the tenant as well, when we're going to be out there, when they're available for us to go out there, once we know, once the 10 days are up. So some tenants, you know, at the 10th day, they want us to be there. Others, they either call us in advance that it's been repaired or been corrected, and again, we're in communication with the tenants. So if they call us, then we go out there, do a visual follow-up, inspection-wise, to make sure it was corrected, and then if it was, we close out the case and document in the system. So we're always in communication with the tenant. And especially Franklin Park, they hire an additional employee that he goes out with the inspectors on every call now, so they can document it as well. And they take pictures, they forward us pictures, we take those, but we also have to visually see that it's been corrected.
Yeah, I believe they hired a constituent services.
Yes, a constituent, yes.
To assist with the property meeting aspect of the operation, I think they, and we've seen, has been a very positive experience.
Has there been any trends that you're seeing in the types of complaints that you're getting?
It's an old infrastructure as well, so a lot of leaks. Minor, I mean, you know, I wouldn't call them minor, but not severely, where, you know, it's going to be demon in habit. But yeah, those are the biggest complaints that we have, and also, you know, infestation, mice and roaches.
And then if you wouldn't mind, I just have a separate question. And I was, I was really curious about the licensing fee. So one of the things that I was asking for, maybe because I work for a hotel company, was around the hotel licensing fees. And it seems like there are some jurisdictions that charge by actual room, and then we just charge, is it flat rate?
We charge a flat rate. And I don't know, I don't know the history that fee was established.
Yeah.
But I thought, very valid question. I think what we can do is commit to evaluating that. I think, you know, I think it's important whenever we look at our fees to also measure the impact it's going to have, the economic impact it'll have on the business. So it's certainly something that I would want to consult with John Mason too, as well before we would be, commit to any type of revision to that. But I agree, that looks like we're the only one that I'm aware of that does a flat fee, the rest do it by, either like Bowie doesn't, the SESP's for their commercial properties, but the others that were higher than us are by unit.
Because just doing some really back-of-the-mac napkin kind of calculation, and thinking about the hotels that we do have in our jurisdiction, they may run like 100 rooms or something like that.
I did the same calculation.
Yeah. Okay. There's some, some stuff we might be getting there. But anyway, thank you for introducing.
No, that's a really good, interesting point that you brought up. And you got to balance that, it's been a really difficult time for our hotels, though, in Greenbelt. And they continue to not have fully recovered from the COVID time. So I think, I think we should look at that, but I think we need to just temper that, talk with Mr. Mason and kind of.
Yeah, and typically, we look at also what resources they require from us, right? I mean, we're really in the, we're intended to be a cost recovery. So, you know, we'll look at our hotel, how much time we're spending inspecting all of our hotels, look at the fee we're currently charging, look at the fiscal impact to the hotels, look at the economic climate, and then from there, talk internally and make an informed, you know, informed recommendation.
Hey, on the topic of, did you have?
No, just a straight question that came up in the Pratt meeting right before this, but it can, it can wait if you have something more related to this.
I have a question, I didn't ask in advance, so shoot me if you want.
Well, don't.
But I'm wondering about our licensing for multifamily units and for the condo associations and homeowner associations. Do we have, within our, the licensing that we have, do the association management companies, are they licensed, or do we have a bond requirement or anything like that in place?
No, the license is issued to the owner of the property, and the fee is assessed by unit, per unit.
Right, because, you know, it's countywide, and I guess throughout the state, there've been situations where homeowner associations and condo associations, we saw one really right outside of our border, where for whatever the reason, they don't have the resources to make repairs. And that's something that the management company would have a role in, just making sure that, and looking at the financial affairs of an association, making sure that adequate reserves are in place and things like that. Let me talk about that later. Are there points that, do you have any thoughts on that?
No, I don't have any thoughts on that. I'm not, I'm not familiar enough with assessing licensing and so forth to property management and not the company. I don't know if it's an in and or, or not, but in terms of condominium association and assessing fees, because I would think a condominium association would absorb that fee. And condominium, we are, know from our own experience, they're struggling.
Yeah.
You know, it's a known fact. So we have to be cautious, that any fee that we assess is being assessed to the homeowners in the condominium, not to the property management. They're going to pass that along.
Yeah, it's a challenging time, for sure. Yes, please, go ahead.
Yeah, this was a question, I was in the Parking Recreation Advisory Board meeting right before this, and they asked if there were updates about Beltway Plaza, which there's a paragraph in the memo about that, basically saying that they did some stuff, but it's paused now. But their question is about the city gaining access to that indoor space we've been promised for the recreation facilities, and that, I think, isn't supposed, isn't required to happen until, I forget, however, like a certain number of building permits? Is there, I mean, is that just, is, do we just have to wait till they get funding to continue the project?
Correct.
Is that basically, that, okay.
Yeah, thank you. I've got one more question that I actually submitted ahead of time, then I'd like to maybe pivot back and just quickly, if you can give us a quick overview of the work plan, because I think the document that you supplied us with was very comprehensive, and it's just good to kind of hear it for the people that may not have had a chance to read through it. But one of the questions I asked was about just trying to make more data available to homeowners, to builders, just to folks in general that are curious. I know we've been working with the Utopia software for a while, we've got the Esri layering software, visualization software, and we've been using it for a while, and it's very helpful. So, and I think we have that layers for the bus stops in town, for the streetlights, roadways, you know, between sidewalks, between Public Works and planning, we've got a lot of information. So I was just wondering if you've been working on any kind of a dashboard or anything, so that more of that information can just, is easy to find when somebody's thinking about the homeowner's interested in doing something, and they just would like to kind of be able to go and look and see themselves instead of sending a question to plan.
Planning and community development can't take credit right now for our GIS library that we do have. Kevin Driscoll Carpenter and Utilizing Internships has built that within, within the planning department. We have not had GIS capabilities until just from bringing Ryan on, so the data is, most lies within Public Works, and we have a partnership, and we share that data collectively. I did consult with Kevin Driscoll Carpenter regarding your question, and that is something that he has been in discussions with, given our new, you know, moving to a new website and so forth. They're ongoing discussions, they're going to, you know, obviously tell the planning department, Public Works, IT, as well as the PIO, but it's a goal of ours, and we anticipate, you know, a lot of that data also, it indicated needs to be updated. And we have new device too, that is helping us to further build that. Thank you to council for funding that. I know he has been out, we're going to call him, he's out in the field mapping something with that device, and we received some training as well. So certainly, we will, we will come back to you, hopefully, you know, with the plan on a rollout on how we can do that.
So City Manager Summerun, is that a high, you know, high-level dashboard in the new website, where people just go and find all that open data and visualize different aspects of the city's infrastructure? Is that one of your goals?
That is, as we, as we are executing our modernization strategy, where a lot of our content and data is going to be more readily available to the public. So the new platform is going to allow the integration of widgets into our website. So the Esri system does create public maps, which are the ones that you see now, they can be, more layers can be created. Esri has really developed neat technology to allow citizens to connect with data in a way that you can't do with an Excel table. So the other data systems that we're looking at are the Esri Business Analytics data and the Resimplify, that would allow residents and prospective business owners to look at geographical data in the city, what spaces are available and whatnot. And so we're working to develop those tools.
Powerful things, powerful tools to have, and when you start to integrate health data and demographic data, you can get a really good picture, just for seeing what direction the city is going in, and figuring out strategies, proactive strategies to kind of deal with disparities or other strengths that you might find in a community.
Right, and there are various sets out there that we can use to integrate into our own maps or allow access from our website. So one of the, one of the database that I use a lot is PG Atlas Merlin. They, there's neat data sets in those maps and also layers. So there are a lot of good technologies out there, it'd be nice if we had it all integrated in one nice place, but we're a long ways from that.
Census Bureau has some great data, you just have to kind of pull it out of them somehow and figure out how to get.
Correct, and get it onto a map. I found a way to be able to do that without doing any work on R and D. The Department of Commerce, for the Maryland Department of Commerce, they've developed a web tool using Resimplify data and census data, so you can go look at economic data through a map. So you can look at different census area, what are the, but what's the median area income for that area, demographic information, a lot of neat census data has been layered into a map.
That's very cool. If you can send me a link to that.
I will.
So, you know, talking about tools and data and just people being able to take things into their own hands, do we have a way for people, if there's a code enforcement violation or a problem, is there a way for people to submit questions or problems online, or do they have to pick up the phone, send an email?
Would they either by phone, or currently by phone or email? We will take complaints by email as well.
Okay, and with the new website, would we have a widget or something that might take those kinds of requests?
Yes, we will have a form, we do, we have a form now that folks can submit inquiries through the website, and those typically come to, go to Brian Kim and myself, and then we forward them on to the right person.
Thank you, thank you. So if it's council's work, why don't we just, if you can kind of talk us through the work plan quickly.
Well, I'm not sure, do you mean the memo that we all presumably read ahead of time, or what are you talking, I'm just not sure what you're referring to.
It's the work plan memo.
The work program, I guess, I'm not sure what you're expecting, I mean, we, I would, I would much prefer to, I mean, we read the memo, I would say.
We read it, yeah.
Well, and everybody else has access to it, I would say if there are specific questions, but I, I would prefer not to take the time to go through it in detail, because we also were going to talk about the item we didn't get to on the meeting on Monday. So, I mean, I'm happy, for me personally, I'm happy if people have questions, but I think it's a waste of everybody's time if we go through the memo that's on paper.
I wouldn't say it's a waste of time. Well, just specifically, a quick update, Greenbelt Station, the connecting path?
Certainly, um, yeah, as I, I think I provided that update as well as the capital improvement, that project is moving along. We are, we are in the process of revising our sediment erosion control plans and permit, and we expect to have that permit issued very shortly. The consultants have nearly completed the revised cost, construction cost estimate, and are working on a response to the state's comments on our 60%. And staff is working on the procurement documents. Once we have that all together, we'll be submitting that to the state, and that has to get state reviewed. Once it does, then we'll get another series of comments back and work through those comments, but once we have all their approval, then we move to procurement, which would probably be the fall the earliest at this point.
Right, right. And a lot of people in the community are asking about the 7010 Greenbelt Road development.
Yep, and staff, I will, I'm most likely in a meeting in May for just, I'll highlight the development for everyone, to remind them what the development is. We do have a little bit of a schedule. They are willing to come, but they would prefer to come later in the fall, it's too early for them. The first building is anticipated until fall of 2026, the entire project is anticipated to be completed in summer of 2028.
Yeah, those are condos, right?
They are condos, yes. 95 condominiums.
A couple of other things, you know, the Stormwater Management Pond over on Oregon, is that finished? These little poles?
Yes.
It's finished, so the, those, what are those poles that are in the, in the pond?
The geese, or geese.
To keep the geese away?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, interesting.
Are they working?
People are asking.
Does that mean they work?
Because there's not much you could do to deter a candidate goose, so.
And with the ARPA projects that are going on throughout the city, Brayden Field and Shrum Hills, does planning have a role in those at all?
Yeah, we work closely with Greg, actually, we're working today on reviewing some plans related to the Ball Field project, Shrum Hills, but yeah, it's a partnership, all of our projects are partnerships. We rely on each other, expertise in the various, you know, disciplines that we have.
Yeah, very good. So finally, I guess we're pressed for time. Finally, with the FBI project, of course, we understand that it's been, it's not going forward, but, you know, meetings have been taking place. Are you continuing to talk with the county?
Go ahead.
We continue to hold our monthly meeting on the FBI project.
And it's with all agencies, you know, we're not a state highway, ourselves, and the county.
Okay. Anything else you think the public might want to know about? You know, we read the memos, but a lot of people don't.
I think we've covered it, we indicated, you know, the wayfinding sign in all of the ARPA projects and the Hanover Parkway project and Vision Zero, so I think those are the major highlights that we have in FY 2026.
Very good.
I would add one more that you're going to see in the coming weeks around the city code. There are two sections of the code that relate to planning that need to be updated, sediment erosion control and zoning.
And, and building regulations.
And building regulations, so.
Which is chapter four, some of you are familiar with that, those revisions.
So I understand that there are some conversations, there were conversations with council some time ago, as we're looking to recodify the city code and update it. I'll be meeting with Terry about including that in the city code update, and instead of going through a series of ordinances to adopt that code, maybe we can save council some time by doing it all at once.
Okay.
Did I miss anything on that, Terry?
No, certainly, they're all just really to bring us in line with current practice and regulations. Actually, we're under a mandate by MDE to update our erosion semi-control regulations. sediment control regulations. And when I say update, we're bringing it up to their 2018 standards. So, you know, but, you know, we're doing what we're being asked to do.
Right. And we do inspections around that, what you just described. Not all municipalities have the responsibility to take care of the sediment and erosion control.
That's true. When we get redelegated, there's quite a process for us to get redelegated every two years. We also submit reports every year. And we, basically, our files get audited by MDE and then they, you know, and they provide, we've passed with flying colors, I would say, but sometimes we do get some constructive feedback that then we implement into our policy and practices, you know, in our future year reporting.
How many other municipalities actually have that authority delegated to them?
I'd have to look. I don't know.
Just three or four, right? Which is in Prince George's Island.
Yeah, there's a few, yeah.
A few. Okay. Any other questions from council? Questions online? Anybody in the room have a question? Mr. Orleans?
Going back to something very much earlier in tonight's meeting, the question of how much responsibility can be laid upon the owner of any multifamily property when their boiler fails. At some point, it was alluded to that condo associations or homeowners associations may not have sufficient funds in their reserve to cover necessary repairs. That's something frankly, for the members of those associations to accept their responsibility for. But in the case of tenants of a multifamily building, it's not the tenant's responsibility to see to it that the property owner, so-called, has sufficient funds to repair or replace a boiler. That's the responsibility of the quote unquote owner of the property. And that such owners are allowed, I might suggest, to skate or not be appropriately fined for their failure to maintain their property so that it's habitable for their tenants is something that should be better addressed. About three weeks ago, I had occasion to be in court in Hyattville. And as I was walking around the third floor looking for somebody, I was approached by three people, one standing, two seated, at the end of the hallway, asking me if I was a resident of Franklin Park. And I said, no, but what's this about? And the guy immediately standing, he said, well, it's related to Franklin Park. So I noted that on the table where the two were seated, there was a lot of paperwork. And to the left or to the right of the woman who was seated, there were two or three plastic file cartons. A lot of paperwork was there. And I did my best to be informed by the court clerk's office. They couldn't inform me. But my sense is, and it's only a sense, that Franklin Park had scheduled for that particular day that I just happened to be there, a number of actions, presumably they would be actions against their tenants. And this brings back a longtime question. I'd like to know, I have a better understanding. My quick perusal of the memo, I did not see reference to what is required of all multifamily owners in the city of Greenbelt to provide advance notice to the planning department when there is an eviction scheduled. And the resolution, presumably, I don't remember the language specifically, but the resolution of those prospective evictions. I think that this merits some discussion tonight, and I would hope the department director, assistant directors and council.
Thank you.
And city management would address them.
Thank you very much. So you did provide a memo with listing some information about evictions. Do you want to talk about the eviction process?
I did not provide any information regarding the eviction.
Oh, I thought I saw something.
But I, foreclosures.
Foreclosures, I'm sorry. Well, so there's a question, you know, it's warm now, we're through winter. Evictions do not happen during the winter when the temperature is cold. So I imagine that there are a fair number of evictions. How does the city, how does city staff interact with the county and the sheriff's office when evictions are pending?
Our department does not get notified of an eviction. So we are not involved in that process. That's why it makes it so challenging to enforce the ordinance that we only do now on a complaint basis. If somebody shares with us that they get evicted, that we then remind a property owner of their responsibility. We don't, we have not received a complaint, in my knowledge. So we're not involved in that process.
Well, I know during COVID, our cares department, the city went the extra yard to try and find some of that information out. Of course, when someone is evicted and their belongings, their worldly goods are placed on the curb, that creates a little bit of an issue. How do we deal with that?
With the eviction items?
Yeah, yes, with eviction items. There was actually a bill about that.
Right. Once we get notified or doing our normal routine wind chills, and we see something like that, we notify the property owner and then that's where either they're going to let us know that there was an eviction, and then we're given 48 hours to, again, remove, you know.
So it's the property owner's, if an individual is evicted and their stuff is out there on the curb, after 48 hours, it's the property owner's responsibility to do something about it?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, that's sad.
To that point, Mr. Mayor, when we have Mr. Carrington here, when is he going to be here a couple of weeks? Maybe this is something we can talk to him about, a bill we'd like to see in the county of notification of evictions, since we don't have a role in the city. This is something that's carried out on the county level, that, you know, the sheriffs, you know, execute evictions. But maybe that is something, some legislation we can try and see if we can get someone to pursue at the county level. Because it would be helpful for us to have that notification, to know that that was happening.
We can certainly do that. And there was a bill this year.
Yes, the Good Cause Evasion Bill.
The Good Cause Evasion Bill, that unfortunately, that did not move forward.
We did support it, but it didn't make it to.
Yeah. Okay. And with Greenbelt Cares, you know, we, the sheriff, the county sheriff, Sheriff Carr, through his office during COVID and subsequently, had been good about providing some notice or providing the list. There's a list of possible evictions. And from what he told us when he was before council, this is a few years back, is they are not able to get to all of those evictions. And a good percentage, like 70 or 80% of the people on the list have found a way to move their belongings and to actually vacate the premises before it actually happens. So are we still getting that information?
I'm not aware that we get any notices. But at the time that cares was involved with the sheriff's office and also the landlords and property owners, a lot of that interaction was driven by the fact that we had rental assistance funding that supported those interactions and provided relief to those tenants. With that money now no longer in place, and we don't have any funding to support any rental assistance program, it really limits the tools that cares or any of our departments can use to keep people in their homes. To the comment that you made, about 70% of the individuals on those eviction rolls that the sheriff can get to, you know, part of that is tenants, when possible, if they're able to move their things, they'd rather move their things than to have it thrown on the streets.
Definitely. And some folks are able to kind of pull their resources together and just avoid it, the eviction.
Right.
But it's a process and it's sad. And unfortunately, we may actually see some of that this month because it's warm now. In winter, they, I don't know when. Is it the temperature, if it's below 40 degrees or something, they can't do, if they don't do evictions? I'm not sure.
I don't remember the exact degrees, but it's typically weather, when the wind's during the winter season.
Yeah. I think it's when it rains also.
We can provide that information.
Thank you so much. Well, at this time, you know, I'd like to thank the Planning and Community Development Department for all they do. Sphere raced over here and didn't have anything to say. But it's because, because of all the work that you do, the.
We talked about you though.
We did. We talked about you though. I'm telling you. But because of all the things you do, our residents are safe. It's a well-coordinated community. And the long-term aspirations of our residents, of council, are realized. And the coordination with the county, when we don't agree on things is so important. So we really, really appreciate all the work that you do. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Okay. So, let's see. Next up, we were going to have a conversation about legislative priorities, legislative issues. And I'm glad to have that conversation. I'd sent an email out. I really, wasn't really prepared to put ideas forward, although subsequently, I was able to pull a few things together.
Well, I think this was the item that was supposed to be on Monday's agenda, and we deferred it because it was after 10 o'clock. So I was just, when I suggested that we add it to tonight, that was what I was thinking. It was the one that was already on Monday's agenda.
Right. Of course, with council's practice, if a council member is interested in deferring an item, that's always been yielded. But let's go ahead and talk about the process, talk about some of the ideas that we have. You know, we're sort of in the throes of the budget process. And traditionally, the legislative priorities, legislative initiatives, even local ones, don't really happen until later in the year. And I know Councilmember Poppy, through the PG CMA and through MML, has, you know, put forward the idea that we really need to get started a lot earlier, particularly with our county and state initiatives. But locally as well, I think it's a question of staff resources. And that's one of the reasons why Mr. Summeron is interested in hearing about them so that he can begin to marshal the staff resources that are necessary to implement some of these initiatives. Some of the items that have been put forward are about referrals to advisory boards. Others will take time to be reviewed by our legal counsel or by staff. So I'll defer to Councilmember Poppy if you want to. We should talk about the process and the timing also. Mr. Carrington's coming to our next council meeting. And in working with liaison or assistant, I'm not saying lobbyist, because he's not our lobbyist, but he's our, he's working for us, keeping us on point. I know he's, through his experience, he knows a lot about what is going to move through the state legislature and can counsel us on some of our ideas. But the time, Councilmember Poppy, did you have some thoughts, just in terms of the discussion with PG CMA and the importance of the members putting forward their initiatives in a timely fashion? You want to talk about that?
Yeah, sure. So as one of the co-chairs of the PG CMA Legislative Committee this year, one of the things that we had discussed was just the fact that, you know, by the time usually PG CMA comes up with their priorities, you know, our legislators are already putting bills in the hopper. So we really want to get in front of that so that if we have priority legislation, we could be reaching out to our delegates and our senators to sponsor that legislation, instead of sort of just coming on the back end and saying, oh, what's out there and what are we going to support? So having our, and even if it's not a specific priority, knowing that, you know, for example, this year, we really want to see local zoning bills, or we really want to see something about good cause legislation, like these are priorities for us. And it's important for us to share those early. And usually, we share them late. And also, and that's for, you know, for the state, but also for the county, you know, we never seem to get our meeting with the county executive. But perhaps have, if we actually have a legislative, county legislative agenda, that would help us get this meeting. And we could get it a little earlier, again, instead of keep getting bumped, bumped, bumped. If we actually have an agenda and priorities, I feel like that could help us get on our schedule, instead of just having a general meeting, having a, you know, a real agenda for a legislative agenda. So that was the thinking behind that. And then as I was thinking of that, you know, it is also for us locally, as we're considering our local legislation, you know, priorities that we want to see come through, things we've heard from residents, you know, it's good to consider those as well, I think, while we're looking at the budget, because this is, you know, it costs money to do all of these things, you know? You know, it costs staff time, it costs legal time. Some of these may increase, you know, costs to the city. So I think we just need to, you know, talk about them now while we're talking about budgeting. Because, you know, again, these things just affect the budget. So that was my thinking behind all of that.
Yeah, I respect that. And in regard to what you said about PG CMA, the same is true with MML. The call goes out to municipalities early on to submit their legislative priorities. And it's sort of like blood out of a stone sometimes, getting those, the information in. And as you said, the legislators begin to draft bills and respond to constituents and other entities early on. So having that information ready to go in August or July is very, very important. Mayor Portem?
Yeah. And I guess, I mean, that all sounds fine, getting a jump on that. But I guess I'm a little confused because I thought that this, this item that was on Monday's agenda was not actually related to county or state legislation. It was about local legislation. So I feel like we're getting a little bit further afield. I'm also, this list is, this only has four. I think we actually had eight on the one last night. Is that, was some of the, was there, or were these the ones that, Mr. Summeron, you thought were the ones that you wanted to most hear about council priorities on?
The list was cut off. And we had, my intention was to have it updated this morning. Heard my email last night, yesterday, that please send us an update so we can update the agenda. But the team wanted to get as much notice out that this item was being added. So it was added in there and the first four items made the list.
Okay. I've got, I've got the full, I've got the one from last night that I can, I can share so we can be looking at it.
You can certainly share that. But let me say, and I told everyone this in an email, I was not prepared to submit additional ones. And I do have some additional ones. I'll share them.
Yeah, that's fine.
If we're having this discussion, because council works as a whole, and if council member says, hey, I'm not ready, I'd like to kind of defer this discussion, that's something that's always been respected.
For, I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. And the, you know, I try to follow the standing rules. And the standing rule says if any member of council wants to add an item to the agenda, they can with a simple email. So it, I apologize if I'm contributing to any disagreement in council. I'm trying to serve all the council members equally. And, you know, when I hear there's an interest in a particular idea, I'm trying to be proactive to think about what that work, what that item would require in terms of workload, resources, and scheduling. So for example, what's on this list, you've got the solid waste rates, council. I appreciate how supportive council is to close that deficit. And as we're now talking about it, and I've had the conversation with GHI, one of the reasons this is important is that the timing of it is important, because we got to get the timing right. If we, and by right, I mean, as much time as possible to introduce legislation, because we want to provide the effective residents and customers at least 30-day notice that this rate is going to change. So in order to make it effective, July 1, we really need to approve it at end of May to issue the proper notices. At this point, in April, we can still, we can still meet that timeline. But there are other issues or other proposals that council needs to hear about before we formally move forward with the resolution to adjust the solid waste rates. So for me, I'm trying to find a way to best serve council with the timing of all of these initiatives. Additionally, there are stakeholders that want to be more involved. I shared with GHI that we are proposing to adjust the solid waste rates. And Mr. Claggett very politely said, I completely understand where you're coming from and your need. However, the practice is that GHI Board of Directors meet with council directly on matters like this. So then that adds an additional meeting that I need to work around. And so that's part of, part of what, part of the discussion around this topic is, how do we schedule all of these things that need to be done? Election is around the corner. So we need to, at the next meeting, we're going to present on the, on the community survey, which, or other questions to the residents. And then we need to start talking about what are the next questions we're going to ask. Is council considering any advisory questions? considering any advisory questions? And many of those advisory questions that I've heard about required some legwork, right? I think if we're going to ask citizens, or one of the requests I heard or interest I've heard is, how does, how do our residents feel about ranked choice voting? I feel that, that obviously that is a council prerogative and I want to do my job to ensure that if council needs a recommendation from the Board of Election or anyone else, that we have the time and resources to be able to put the, put the effort in generating that recommendation and any materials related to that. And I could go on. The list is long. There's something on every item in there. All of these items is, I feel like this is a short list of all the things that I, that I've heard.
And we did have a discussion on these priorities back on August the 14th, 2024. So there are a number of items that were brought up and they don't appear on this list.
Correct.
So I was going to share some of those as well. I mean, we can kind of go through the list one by one, but I'd like to get, and other council members probably have some thoughts that they may not have gotten, you know, we had, came up on the agenda on Friday. Then on, as on the draft agenda, I think is the first time when council had a chance to kind of look at this list. So I don't know if Ms. Pope or if Councilmember Niesel have some additional thoughts or other council members at the table.
I guess one thought, I think when we, we talked about legislative issues back in last summer, I guess, at this point, we had talked about trying to have some sort of tracking document. And I think I might have drafted that from point where we can keep track of things that all of us are hearing and assuming, things that your community, staff are getting from the community, so that we can kind of track the progress against that, whether it is assigning it to, you know, asking for one of our advisory board committees to look at it, whether it's staff is looking at it and things like that. I think we need to have a document or one source of truth that continues so that it just doesn't come up in, on a meeting and then we're scrambling to actually address some of them, make sure that we're saying that. So I agree with Councilmember Pompey that we need to, we need to get ahead of a lot of the legislative issues, especially at the county and the state level. But I also think as we are planning our own work sessions as well as regular council meetings, we need to be a little bit more strategic in how we're planning that out. So I guess my recommendation is, if we're going to spend the time, I would love to be able to spend the time during a work session to actually plan that out, whether that, and I know we don't have a whole lot of time, but we're going to continue to do that unless we spend the time planning that out.
Right.
I think that's a, that's a good way of putting it. Mayor Portem?
I guess I think one way to look at this, this initial list, which I recognize is an initial list, is sort of the time sensitivity of these things. I think the resolution to increase solid waste rates is probably the most time sensitive one because it relates to the budget. And Green Aces will be meeting on Tuesday with the, a group that is offering pay as you throw or like information about a pay as you throw or they actually, oh, they had a slightly different term for it that I'm not remembering that it's, but so the idea that you, you pay per bag, you have a flat fee and then pay per bag. So if people throw away less trash, they pay less. And so Green Aces is going to talk about that on Tuesday and is going to have a recommendation. Now, it's a tight timeline. So that seems like the most time sensitive.
And I think there was a pretty good consensus from council about the proposal, the idea of increasing solid waste rates. The pushback from GHI, though, is, it's a serious issue. But yeah.
And I think those are actually two separate questions.
Two separate questions, yes.
Because the solid waste rates need to increase. I think, yes, there was consensus on that, but this would be possibly a modification of that that could ease some of those rate increases because people who don't generate a lot of trash then wouldn't have to pay as much. And people who generate more trash would pay more. So more of a metering or utility model for it. And it seems like the-
But I do want to push back also on, this is not an initial list. We've talked about this before. I have pointed out, I've got some items.
Yeah, I understand. Can I finish? I think the other time sensitive ones seem to be the ballot questions in the Board of Elections, like in anything we want to refer to the Board of Elections. So what is the, the deadline for putting those sorts of things on the ballot, I think? Because that's important to know.
Yeah, administratively, it's September.
September.
September when we have to have it for the ballot.
Okay, so a little bit more time. The others, recycling regulations, city zoning, is there any, it sounds like there are some things that were required by MDE to update, but is there any particular timeline on those?
The, according to Terry, we're overdue.
Okay.
And instead of, we, we spoke, we've spoken over the last couple of days trying to just squeeze it into the city recodification process. Because a lot of that zoning and erosion sediment control, it's not legislation that we necessarily have a lot of flexibility. It's codifying what we're required to have in our code. So under, I saw that as more of a compliance matter that our code needs to be brought up to go. Similarly to our ethics code that council adopted a couple months ago, there weren't a lot of change of that. We were just looking to meet compliance requirements. So with that, there is some time, some time sensitivity to that initiative and that is that we have a contract with municipal code to complete this work by May 13. We have the ability to extend it. There could be some cost implications for extending it and how much review we're going to do.
So would that be involved in the zoning code or just the number four here, the adoption of the new city code and the recodification?
Both. So we're looking to combine that into one. Now, I'm, I'm recommending that we combine it into, into one because the code updates that we're doing are all, are all just compliance related. Otherwise, we wouldn't want to make such a change to the code without having a separate process to review that, that section of the code.
But some of it is, if it's stuff that we have to do, then we, and we're following state law, we just have to update, we might as well do it.
Correct.
Okay. And then I think the rent stabilization one is, and is, I think, not necessarily on a particular timeframe. I just think that's worth framing this. And part of the reason why I thought it was worthwhile to, at least with this list that was on Monday's agenda, now we've talked about some of those things when it comes back up at a regular meeting. Now at least we've got a little bit better of a sense of which ones have a, a time sensitivity, if not in importance, because those are kind of two separate factors.
Correct.
So good discussion points. You know, I think just kind of looking about at legislation that's happened in some of our sister municipalities on the recycling regulation piece, I was looking around. I don't know if anybody else is aware, but Laurel actually passed a mandatory organic recycling ordinance that's going to come into effect July 1. It's kind of exciting.
Did you send that around?
Yeah, sure. Sure. But a while back, you know, I had asked, when we were talking in August, before that, I had asked for a referral from Green Aces about trying to get sort of like a sustainability action plan for 2030, for some suggestions. I brought that up a few times and I have not really gotten too much feedback from that. I'd really like to put that forward again, to have us put our heads together and, you know, what COG has in place and what the Green Aces and the city already have in place is great, but I'd like to make it a little bit more time bound. I think there's some things that we can achieve between now and 2030. I talked about also trying to sunset the use of gas-powered blowers and mowers, maybe sunsetting that by 2027, given a couple of years. But, you know, a lot of our residents have complained about the impact that gas-powered blowers and equipment lawn mowers have. Of course, the city, we're moving away and I think we're using electric equipment now in some cases. It takes a little time. So those are a couple of things. You know, there were some other initiatives that I've not really had a chance to flush out quite so much. But a couple of, you know, we actually talked about back in August, I mentioned the idea of some sort of a telecommunications licensing, licensing fee. And Mr. Summeron has also brought up that some of our neighboring jurisdictions have a fee that's associated with the poles and the equipment that's hung on our poles. We've had issues with double poles in Green Dog for many years. So I think if we have the capacity to manage that a little bit better with a fee that's associated with equipment that's hung on our, on utility poles and actually thinking about, you know, we may actually own these poles pretty soon. So if we had a fee on them now, we could use some of the resources that come from that fee to purchase the poles. On the advisory questions for the Board of Elections, you know, it's always been talk about extending the two-year terms to four-year terms, staggered four-year terms. Something I'd like to kind of ask them about. This idea of reducing the age for election workers, poll workers to 16, since we've lowered the voting age from 18 to 16, why can't younger people actually make a little bit of money by working on Election Day and helping out? I mean, there's some other things that we've talked about. The idea of an arts district designation or using the Main Street District Designation, something that was talked about maybe 10 years ago. We haven't really looked into it lately. I was looking at, at my taxes yesterday and the day before and there's, there's a nice tax break for people that, employees that work in an arts district. So while the city may have been looking at, at this arts district designation from the city's point of view, I think there might be some economic development or just workforce development benefits that we may not have considered so much. I've got a few more, but Councilmember McKinney?
I'm sorry, I just want to clarify. So on today's agenda, the goal was to look at the things that had some time sensitivity, correct? That does not necessarily preclude the fact, like, I think you're right. We all have some additional legislative priority items that we want to discuss. So can we just make sure we have identified what are the next steps on the items on this agenda and then identify a time for an upcoming meeting where we can spend more time going through the other legislative priorities that we all will bring to the table and have further discussion about? I just want to make sure we have given direction, if we're giving direction for these eight items here, that we've done that appropriately. So things like the council referral to the, to the Board of Elections regarding ranked choice and district or the ward representation on council, that takes some time. I know we have to prepare for that. You've started to outline some of those dates. So the next step is what that we need to do for that? Has it been referred? Do we need to do anything else for that?
We need to make the referral.
Yeah, was that, was that a question?
Yes, that's a question. Are we making the referral today?
I don't think you can.
Or do we need to do something else in order to make the referral?
You can't do that tonight.
We can't do that tonight.
We have to put that on a regular agenda meeting. So we have to assign that to our upcoming agenda.
Correct.
That's the next step.
Correct. So in, in last week's conversation, speaking with, with Ms. Pompey, some of these items need actions for us to allocate resources and the hope was that council would say, yes, with whatever items that were discussed and could be moved, that we could start moving them forward. Because right now, we're sort of, we have, as you heard from tonight, there's a ton of ideas and they're, we haven't scheduled them. We don't have directors to move them forward. It would be improper for me to move any of these referrals to the Board of Election without council.
Yes, understood. Okay.
And it's really council is doing the referral.
Correct, correct. Council is doing the referral and a lot of, a lot of these are also council setting directions. For example, on the city code, I'll just touch on the city code. I've tried to keep council informed of every step of the code for several months. And now that I see this massive book that I've shared with Jay as well, it's, it's a lot of things to get through. I also had a brief conversation with, with the mayor about some of the edits that were proposed and the, I do not want to make any assumptions about anything that's being modified that you may not have any concerns with, even though it's not changing anything substantial. There's no substantial changes. It's bringing it up to code, to compliance. There may be things in there that you might want to discuss.
Okay. So are we determining now which of these items will be on the next regular council meeting?
That we can do. That we can do. Yes.
Well, I mean, we can do that, but I keep pushing back. So we, I applaud Councilmember Pompey for putting this list together and for it appearing on Friday because it wasn't really in the draft agenda until Friday. So, you know, I've got a list and I want these items, just as other council members may want some items included in this list if we're, if we're doing this initial delegation quickly.
Well, there was nothing stopping you from proposing a similar agenda item, Mr. Mayor.
Well, this is a work session, so I was bringing up some of the items. Usually you have a work session to kind of talk, put together a list and talk about it at times. I don't think we're doing.
I don't think any of these are things we haven't talked about. And I would say the next step on the solid waste rates is the recommendation from Green Aces. So that one, that one is already sort of, that one's moving along. We're going to talk about the city code next Wednesday after the recreation work session. And then it sounds like for the city zoning code, that sort of planning needs to look, that's, because that's driven by them. So those three, at least, we have pretty solid next things already in place.
Okay, well, if it's council's will, can I go ahead and forward a list? You know, I mentioned, sent out an email saying that I was not prepared to put forward lists. I do have a list. There's some ideas on here. Is it, is it okay with council if I send that over tomorrow and somehow we can integrate it into this list? That it sounds like you want to put this list on the agenda, the next agenda for, for council. Can I, can any council member add ideas to this or is it just?
Yeah, I'm fine with adding it and I think this will be probably a phased process. So we might not have all of the items on the agenda for the next regular council meeting. There may be another council meeting after that, that we would have to add additional items to that list. I think we're just trying to prioritize. So maybe as we're thinking through, what are the ones that, that you have on your list, Mr. Mayor, that are time sensitive, that can be added for that next meeting? And then we have the following meeting, we, we might add more to that at that point.
A suggestion or a request for that, if we can, as these are put forward and maybe we can subdivide them when, when they appear on the next meeting, the things that have a time sensitivity and the ones that don't necessarily have a time sensitivity. And if we have information about what that timeline is, because I think that will help guide the discussion and prioritize the prioritization.
Yeah, you know, I'm comfortable with that. And I think that the city manager and staff can, can actually look at a list and figure out which ones are time sensitive. But, you know, I think, you know, and another way to sort of look at it is there's, on the one hand, there are items, issues that we need to make referrals on or that we're following up on referrals, things that we've already asked for. And that's, that's been an issue for a while. We make referrals. It's in the minutes. Sometimes it takes a little time to get the minutes back to the advisory board. So they, they may not be aware that council has made a referral. And that's why it's important to, to track. As you've said, Councilmember McKinney, to track the referrals and to track the issues. Councilmember Pompey, what do you think?
I think all that's fine. You know, the, the list was never meant to be the final list or the total list. It was meant to be a jumping off point, like to start a conversation. There was, you know, it, yeah, that's it. It was just meant to be a jumping off point. It was meant to get people thinking, to get us talking about priorities and get us talking about, you know, the things that we need to do as a council, you know, over the next, however long, rest for term is nine months, six months? So anyway, that was, that was really it. Like, it was just meant to be a chance for us to talk about locally the kind of legislation that we're hoping to move in the next six months. And, I mean, I do agree with you that we should have a larger conversation with, with Mr. Carrington about state and count. Like, I think that's important that we do that when he's here. But this was really just meant to be like, let's, let's make sure that we're, you know, we're doing the things that we want to do, that we're staying on top of it, that we're giving the city enough direction so they can be, you know, moving through things so that we're not like, hey, what happened to that legislation that I wanted to do about the gas leak blowers? Where'd that go? But I feel like if we sort of have these conversations regularly, we can, you know, we'll know, we'll know where it is, you know, and it will, you know. So anyway, this was just meant to be a jumping off point and that's really it. And like I said, I'm sure everyone has things they want to do, things that they're thinking of, things they've heard from, from constituents.
And things we've already discussed.
Right. So I think, you know, I, you know, everyone's priorities are equally important and, and some of them will take longer too, like the, the rent stabilization regulations. That's, that's, that's a long process. Takes a lot of work to do that. Like, so, I mean, time sensitive or not, like, that's not something that we can come up with in like a month and be like, here we go, we're ready to go. Like, that's something that- and be like, here we go, we're ready to go. Like, that's something that takes a long time. So like, some things take longer. And that's the other reason for the list. It's like, okay, we've got some long-term things that we're working on, and we've got the more immediate things we're working on. You know?
So.
Does that make sense?
It, it does. Perfect sense. With the rent stabilization piece, so the county, they, they did, didn't they make permanent their, their legislation in place? And are there some big gaps in that?
There are some gaps. One of the main issues is that there's no real enforcement mechanism. And we certainly can't enforce it here in the city. We have no ability to enforce it.
County reg.
Yeah, the county regulates it. So that's one of the issues, is we need to be able to enforce that here for our residents. So that's one of the main things, is that what we need to do here, if we want to enforce it, which I, I think we do, is to make sure that we have an enforcement mechanism here, so that we can actually support our residents in that way. And then the other thing is, is just really, some, there, there's some other things, like the, like the, they have the, you know, your, your legacy then, if you've, if your complex was built in 2000 or later, which is, really, this is a way to move us towards never having rent stabilization, because eventually everything's going to be built after 2000, you know? So, you know, other places like in, I think Mount Rainier, and I know in Montgomery County, it's a rolling deadline. So it's like, you get fifteen years where you're exempt, and then you are in the system like everybody else. So, like, small things like that, that I think would be more beneficial for our community.
Right.
You know, like, we can protect them a little more, and this is a time where they really need that kind of financial protection.
Right. I have to admit, you know, I hadn't studied on what county council actually passed, but I do, I am quite aware in that grandfathering in part sort of took a lot of the teeth out, out of.
Yes, it really did. And, and I think we could just offer them a little bit more protection than that. I mean, we don't have a lot of units that have been built post-2000, but we have some, you know? It's not the majority, because obviously the majority are right on park. That's where the majority of our units are, you know?
Right.
And we could even, too, to your point, Mayor, as we're crafting this rent stabilization regulations, we could put some kind of good cause legislation into our rent stabilization legislation as well. So, anyway, that's just, I mean, there are a lot of things to think about with that, but.
So with, with the list that you have, thinking of the time sensitivity, can you, is it, did you rank it from one numerically?
No, those are not in any priority order.
Okay, okay. So is, would everyone be comfortable with maybe, with the referrals? I mean, some of our advisory boards have been very, very busy. They've done a lot of work on the all resident voting, or the non, I mean, we've asked a lot of the Board of Elections, and they've done, previously done some work. But if we're going to do referrals, you know, I think we should do them all at the same time, and while, while they do, I mean, they're going to be busy.
The Board of Elections is busy. The Board, they're, they're meeting tomorrow? They're, they're busy. As you know, the, the timeline for the elections has already been finalized. We're, we're now going through the, the execution of those action items. We've got to rent the voting machines, the, the scanner machine. We've got to put together the advertisement, which we're doing now ahead of the April 26th Touch a Truck event. We're going to have marketing material for voter engagement. So that work is ongoing. It's already started. We started translating the registration form.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so there's, there's a lot of work for the election board to do. So I would say that is even more reason to send a referral with as much time as possible, because they have a lot going on, running an election, and if we want them to weigh in on a number of issues, it's, we, we should be fair to give them enough time.
Okay.
Have already started looking at. They've talked about ranked choice.
Correct.
Yeah, and I think they've, so it's, it's not necessarily going to be starting fresh.
They're just waiting to hear from us on that. So I think if we charge them with that, we'll probably get a report fairly quick.
Pretty quick.
Yes, and, and in their defense, the, they heard us, they heard the conversation. They've been tuning in, and they said, well, council is interested in this. So, so I'm, I'm, I think that, that speaks to the.
No, I think it's great that they, they had that conversation. Yeah, I think that's good.
Uh, Mr. Roberts, you got any thoughts?
I don't think ranked choice is up to the Board of Elections. I think that's up to the City Council to decide what types of things we want to put on, if you want to put on a ballot issue or something like that. It's up to the council, not, you know, to, it's up to the Board of Elections to run the election, not to tell people how to vote, I think. But a lot of this we're talking about tonight, I don't know where it's coming from. Hopefully, it's not going anywhere.
Well, so, on the next agenda, can we have, in this discussion, can we have one subitem which actually talks about referrals to advisory boards, and another section, time-sensitive local legislation, and perhaps, perhaps those two, and maybe we can fill in if council members have other items they'd like to, to vet between now and the next council meeting? Maybe we can kind of hash it out a little bit. That way, we'll be moving forward and, and actually giving staff the direction that they need to move ahead. Not just staff, but the advisory boards. And also, you know, we always need to include the public with their thoughts on what we're talking about. So let's, we got a question here from Mr. Orleans.
We've had that question for thirty minutes, sir. It was suggested about thirty-five minutes ago that because this was deferred on Monday night, the suggestion had been made it be discussed tonight. I don't recall that suggestion being made Monday night. I would still maybe question it, but I don't know how many residents are in the room tonight, two of us. I don't know how many are watching on live stream, or video, or YouTube, or whatever those means are. I'd like to know, can the assistant, the city clerk inform me how many people are in, in Greenbelt are watching this by some means at this moment?
There's no way to know that. There are two people on Zoom, but we can't tell how many people are watching on, on other means.
Well, if that's the case, that's, that doubles the number in the room. That, allowing that it's four, as many as four. I don't think any of those four people knew that an agenda item at the regular meeting on Monday night was going to be added to the agenda of the work session tonight. It takes a very liberal interpretation of other items at the bottom of the agenda for tonight to include a discussion of an agenda item for the regular meeting Monday night. I'd like to know when the mayor pro tem suggested that it should be added to tonight's discussion, and I'd like to know if that had been agreed to, whenever that was, why it's not on the agenda for tonight. I'm suggesting the entire entirety of the last thirty-five minutes really has been, but not a waste of time, because I'm edified, but really been inappropriate to the interests of the people of the city of Greenbelt. I'll say it again, nobody believes, agrees with me, but it's not council that owns council. It's the residents of the city of Greenbelt that own council. You should follow state law, Mayor Protem.
Thank you for your question.
And not do things like has been done for the last thirty-five minutes.
Mr. Orleans, I suggested it yesterday and asked for the online agenda packet to be updated, which it was, and alerts were sent out via our usual methods. So there was more than twenty-four hours' notice that the, that this was being added to tonight's work session. It was, so it's, it's available in the agenda packet on the website. It was sent out via alerts, via email. And so, no, I did not suggest it on Monday's meeting, because I didn't think about it at the time, but I sent it Tuesday morning when I did think about it. So that was, yeah.
Yeah, let me just add, it's not, it's not unusual for council to talk about calendar items or agenda items at a work session.
I think the appropriate thing would have been to bring it up at the next regular meeting. I mean, that's the way I, we have something on a regular meeting agenda, and it gets deferred. Normally, it would come up to the next regular meeting, because that's, hopefully, that's when more people are watching. I, I don't know, but hopefully they are.
Okay.
And so, it really, really shouldn't go to, to a work session like this.
I think that was the point.
You know, with one day's notice, that's not appropriate.
Was to identify which, which items were going to go on the next regular agenda meeting. And so there needed to be a discussion about whether or not that should go on the regular council meeting that will be upcoming, because it was not, we did not get to it on this past meeting. So this was never meant to be a full-on discussion about the items. It was simply a scheduling conversation to prioritize those items to go on the regular council agenda.
And it's not unusual at all for council to talk about agenda items in a work session, calendar items. But, yes, Councilmember Pompey.
Move, move on. I think we'll just proceed with the meeting.
Yeah. So I've just made a couple of suggestions about how, what to put on the next agenda and how to put it on. I, I do, you know, I'm sensitive to what Mr. Roberts just said about the timing of this, and that's, you know, I pushed back. So if there are other suggestions that would fit into these, referrals to advisory boards, or time-sensitive matters, you know, perhaps we can all submit any other ideas, or actually look back to the previous work sessions that we've had, whether either advisory board referrals or suggestions to try and incorporate them. I think that's the best way to move forward.
I will be putting together the list of initiatives that I heard of tonight, and now we will organize them. Right now, I have two categories to organize by, referrals and time-sensitive matters.
The third category may be less time-sensitive matters, if there are some that are local legislation that are not time-sensitive.
Right. Okay. Any other, anybody online with comments? No? Okay. Well, we got a couple of information items, I believe. Mayor Protem?
Yeah, it's, I, I just wanted to talk about, speaking about schedule, about this Saturday and next Saturday, because there's a number of different events, and I, and I think, I don't think, we cannot all be at all of them, because the timing overlaps. So I thought it was worth a little bit of discussion of who's going to go where and how we distribute that, because Ms. Pope is out of town. I believe you're out of town this Saturday. So there is both the legislative update that Senator Washington is doing at the library, as well as, I believe, an anti-MAGLEV event, and then there's the egg hunts, that are both at ten o'clock on Saturday. I don't know who has inclinations for, for, for those two things. I will be going downtown, since the mayor's out of town, I'm filling in for him at, speaking at the, was it Greater Washington Region Clean Cities Coalition at one o'clock. There's also the GHA Bicycle Committee at one o'clock. So those are both also two things that are overlapping at the same time, and there's a lot more on the 26th. So I don't know what people are thinking about, what they would like to do, just so that we don't all show up at one place and nobody at the other place.
Well, I'm, I'm happy to go to the legislative meeting if Ms. McKinney is free to go to the egg hunt.
You know, there's choc, there's chocolate involved with the Easter egg. You'll get a chance and get a photo with the Easter bunny, too.
Well, and the egg hunt will actually be, I mean, the egg hunt will be done quickly, so then could come back, too. But I feel like if there, if there's, if, if there's any opening need to, like, recognition at the beginning of the legislative thing, so. Is there another one that I don't have?
Yeah, so on the 26th, I also have the youth baseball opening.
Oh, that's right. That's right.
And then the Touch a Truck.
Right, well, I mean, we haven't gotten to the 26th yet. I was just doing the 19th.
Sorry, that was the wrong date. Sorry.
Yeah.
So yes, I, I plan, I can be, plan on being at the egg hunt.
Okay, and I can go there and then, or, yeah, we can decide and then go to the.
I will go to the egg hunt, and then the, the overlapping meeting is the Town Hall.
Right, the, the legislative priority Town Hall, just so that there's at least one of us there.
Yeah, and you can come after the egg hunt, I think, just to have someone there, so that the senator sees that we're present at the beginning of the.
Yeah, and if you could share my regards, and apologies for not being there, but I, I think that legislative update, the Town Hall, may go a little long, when it's, given that it is combined with the rally against the MAGLAV, there may be, I would expect there'd be a lot of people out.
Yeah.
So.
I just think it's good that someone's there at the beginning.
Yeah.
Definitely. Hey, with the Little League Baseball.
Well, hold on, did it was something about the 19th?
Yes, and that was my informational item, that I'm not gonna, I'm not able to be there. I've, I've got a prior commitment, but all the delegates are going to be there, and the chief, I spoke with the chief of staff for Senator Washington, asked, they wanted a list of who our council members are going to be there. And there's an expectation that there'll be some remarks as the whole city for the event.
On the 19th?
On, on this Saturday, the 19th.
The 19th.
Yeah. So whoever the ranking council member is.
Well, we can, yeah, I think if Jenny's going to be there, or if it makes sense for both of us to be there, we, we, but at least as long as there's somebody at the.
It doesn't have to be that way.
Yeah. Well, that's, that's, that's the 26th. That's the next day.
And I would say, I think I was from last year.
Yeah, I was not.
Hold up, hold on. Now, I, I sort of, I held back a little bit, you know? I could have done my slider and, you know, I held back.
Practice a little more this year. Maybe we could play catch.
Yeah.
But I, I threw a strike. I don't care what you said. So, but last year, we were able to ask to, to make the, make Little League Baseball aware of the fact that council had a conflict. I think they flexed a little bit on, we weren't able to be there for the parade.
They did, and we, we drove the van around that day.
So if we can kind of ask them about that, if we can ask them if they're flexible, if they can have any flexible, of course, the most important thing is for them to have fun, and it's not about council, it's about them. But if they aren't willing to flex the time a little bit, that would be helpful.
Okay, I'll, I'll check.
So yeah, so we have the, that at nine thirty, the parade starts at nine thirty?
That starts at nine thirty, and then the Earth Day event at Spring Hill Lake Rec is at ten. Touch a Truck is at eleven. Autism Awareness is at one.
There's also something at twelve over at the French Immersion School. There'll be the rest.
And then the volunteer fire department and rescue squad auxiliary banquet is in the evening at five. When was there something at Greenbelt Cinema that I'm missing?
Not on the 26th. That's on the 27th is the one that, the one that Tom Adams sent out, was the 27th. So that's at least on a different day.
Yeah.
The other thing, there is a Makerspace Repair Cafe, but again, that doesn't, that's from, from ten to two, but that doesn't necessarily require, like, official presence.
Maybe we should recruit some former council members to go out and cover for us.
So what is, what is it at twelve? There's, there's a cleanup at the, the French Immersion School at Dark.
Yeah, they're, they're, the city, we're supplying them with some mulch, I believe, and they're redoing their playground over there.
That's correct.
Yeah. And it's supposed to be from twelve to one.
A cleanup event, and they have a STEM fair and other activities for the students.
Afterwards or before?
Afterwards, correct.
Yeah. I'm going to try and do those all.
You're going to split yourself. There's also conflicts on the 3rd. There are three things happening, no, two things happening at the same time on May 3rd at nine AM. So that's the arthritis walk at Eleanor Roosevelt in Berwyn Heights is, Berwyn Heights Day, which they have their pancake breakfast. So.
What's the 3rd, is there a 3rd thing?
Uh, no, sorry, I had it marked as three.
There's a racial justice essay in Creative. Our students.
What time is that?
At one.
Okay.
That's over in the community center.
Correct.
With the arthritis walk, they, they kick off exactly around nine o'clock. So in the past, I've been able to kind of pop in over there and then get over to Berwyn Heights in time to still get a couple of pancakes. Sometimes they've run out of sausage before I come.
But so the things, the, the Earth Day event. Well, so the, the Earth Day event on the 26th, are you planning to be there to read the proclamation? So that's covered?
Yes.
Okay. And then, so that, there's, there's, it's more of an, in sequence thing on the 26th. There's, I guess, fewer things that are, well, except for the, except for the, the parade.
Right.
So that means that, yeah, we can check about the, the, with, with the, with the Little League Baseball folks.
There's basically four things happening within a two-hour block.
Yeah. Okay. That's, that's, that was my information. I was just, I, I was looking at my calendar, and there's, there's a lot of things the next three Saturdays.
Now, that's, it's not unusual.
We, we were able to make it work last year with the Earth Day activity and the parade. But I do think having the bus was important, because there's no parking.
Right.
At the field.
That's very true.
Because if you're showing up late, we had to have it, or else we wouldn't have been able to make it, because there would be nowhere to park. So.
Okay, we'll work it out. But, so any other, just, thanks for bringing that up and kind of thinking through it. We'll divide and conquer when necessary.
Well, and the other thing we didn't mention that isn't overlapping with things, but the Greenbelt Cinema anniversary is also the 3rd. But that's, that's, that's later on, so there's not, there's not as much overlap on that one.
Right. And of course, Greenbelt Day weekend is coming up in June, June the 8th. What do you, what, tentatively, what do you have scheduled so far?
We have, we have confirmed the naturalization ceremony.
Excellent, excellent. Excellent, excellent.
We secured a singer for it, and I think this year's a, a, a special year.
Some extra security. Concert band will be, uh, performing and any other, uh, city functions?
I will work on the, on the schedule for that. But yes, concert band, I understand is moving forward. And the naturalization ceremony, what's.
And the museum may do some sort of.
Probably, correct, in Greenbelt.
Okay.
Uh, in, in June.
June.
June. Or June the 7th, then? Well, it's, it's the whole weekend. It's jam-packed.
It's Greenbelt Day.
It's Green Big Day, a weekend.
One day is not enough.
That's right, that's right.
It's not enough for the Greenbelt Day.
Okay, well, I'd like to suggest that we go ahead and call it a night.
Sounds good.
Any other information? Okay, well, let's, uh, let's.
It's Sunday, June 8th.